Good evening. This time is 6:33 on Tuesday, May 23. At this time, I am calling the meeting to order for going into closed session. The Board does not have a quorum to go into closed session as it proposed to do. Therefore, we will be unable to do so. We will reschedule the closed session and post the notification regarding that. So we will see everyone back here at 7 o'clock for the beginning of the meeting, which will start with a public hearing regarding taxes. Thank you. I get four. And so we can call the meeting to order. So John, I'm going to ask you to do a roll call for me.
Will do. President Franklin.
Here.
Commissioner Colbert.
Here.
Commissioner Hansett.
Here.
Commissioner Lot. Police Chief David Burst.
Here.
Town Administrator Carl Snyder.
Here.
Public Works Director Darnell Bond.
Here.
Town Clerk John Hoatsen here.
Okay. There is no closed session summary to read into the record. We did not have a quorum to hold a closed session. We will reschedule that most likely for June 12. We are now moving into public hearing. So each speaker will have three minutes. And if you are online, do we have people online, John?
We do not as of right now.
Okay. So I can skip that. If you are in the room and you wish to provide public comment, then you will come up to the podium. You will have your three minutes and then you will sit down and let the next person come up to the podium. We are listening, so it's not a, the tax section is not a question and answer. It's just a listening and we will move, when we move into the regular meeting and the budget, we'll be able to address some of the comments and questions. So I'm going to read this. "The town of Upper Marlboro Ordinance 2023-03 Town Tax Rate and FY24 Budget Public Hearing, Tuesday, May 23, 2023, 7 o'clock PM prior to the May regular town meeting. All interested persons are invited to attend said public hearing and present their views. Notice is hereby given to the, by the Board of Commissioners of the town of Upper Marlboro, Maryland, that on Tuesday, April 25, 2023, Ordinance 2023-03, was introduced and read at the April regular town meeting of the Board of Town Commissioners proposing an ordinance relating to adopting and approving the budget for the fiscal year 2024, along with the corresponding tax levies and set forth compensation for employees and officers, and to establish certain procedures for reviewing and amending same, as more particularly set forth herein." So we will begin. Please keep your comments for right now related to the taxes. And you will have opportunities to talk on other topics during the rest of the meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to provide public comment regarding taxes?
Budget?
This is, so this is a hearing regarding the tax increase. And I guess, Kyle, you can put up the slide. Or John, could you go to the next slide so everyone can kind of see the summary of it? The budget will be when we close the public hearing and go into the regular town meeting. So this is, if you can't read it, what it says is there's a tax increase from .034 to .038. This was a targeted tax rate with three years of increases done by the previous Board of Commissioners three years ago. This is the final tax increase. It will generate approximately $6,000 more revenue for the town. You can see what your taxes would be. You can see how many taxes you pay and how many services you receive. You can also see the kind of breakdown of how your taxes are distributed. And I can say, in the budget book, it explains that this money is less than the increase in the cost of fuel and maintenance on vehicles because of the increasing prices with inflation. So if anyone wants to comment on taxes, now's your three minutes for that. We'll get to the budget in a few.
So I recognize the need to raise taxes because everything gets more expensive. I'd like for the Commission at some time to consider the home set tax credit. It has been maintained at 100%, which means that for the town portion of the taxes, everyone's purchase price of their homes is what is considered, not the current assessed value of the home. So, you know, my next door neighbor just moved in. Their house gets assessed more than twice what mine does, probably like three times as much. And so, I mean, I don't say think you should go to zero because that's going to hurt the people who have had their homes, you know, their family for 100 years, but if something needs to be done so that way the newer residences of the town are not taking the burden.
Yes.
John, is there anyone online?
There is not.
So I will close, I will make, sorry. Is there a motion to adjourn this public hearing given there is no more public comment? Is there a second?
Second.
John, would you call the vote for us?
Will do. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Hansett.
Commissioner Lot.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll move on to the regular town meeting. It is after 7:10, so we can do that. John, would you call, or Clerk Hoatsen, would you call the roll for us again?
Will do. President Franklin.
Here.
Commissioner Colbert.
Here.
Commissioner Hansett.
Here.
Commissioner Lot. Town Administrator Carl Snyder.
Here.
Police Chief David Burst.
Here.
Public Works Director Darnell Bond.
Here.
John Hoatsen, Town Clerk, here.
Thank you. We will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible).
We'll move on to review of the agenda. We do have some changes we're going to have to make. So, do you have it on the screen? I can't remember.
Oh, yeah. I'm at.
Okay, so the, we have the consent agenda. We have the reports. Then we have the business. The business items are Resolution 2023-10, employment agreement with Chief of Police, Resolution 2023-11, TASER contract. This is backwards. This is out of order.
Yeah, it's out of order, so.
All right.
I can read it. I got it. I'll read it for the record.
I'll read, yeah. You want to read it? Okay.
I can read it. 12 business.
Yes, thank you.
2023-3, fiscal year 24 budget, board vote. B, budget book fiscal year 24, board vote. C, ordinance 2023-04 personnel, board vote. D, resolution 2023-10, employment agreement with Chief of Police, board vote. E, resolution 2023-11 TASER contract, board vote. F, resolution 2023-12 government relations firm, RFP, board vote. G, charter review board nominations, board vote. H, Upper Marlboro Economic Development Work Group nominations, board vote. 13 administrative updates. 14 public comment for items not necessarily on immediate agenda. Three minutes per item. 15 preliminary approval of next meeting agenda. And 16 adjournments.
Thank you. Can you go back to that because we just have two changes that we need to make? Or that I'm going to propose we make? Because we didn't have a closed session, I'm proposing we table Resolution 2023-12 Government Relations Firm to the June 12 meeting. And because we need to discuss the nominations for the Charter Review Board, I am proposing that we just move that Charter Review Board nominations to the June 12 meeting. Is there a second for that? Or is there a motion to move those, table those two items?
Moved. Second.
Okay. Can you call the?
Yep.
Vote for us.
Yep. President Franklin. Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Hansett.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot. Motion carries.
So we will go forward with this revised agenda unless you guys have additions or other changes. So the first part is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Clerk Hoatsen, would you call the vote for us?
Will do. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Hansett.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot. Motion carries.
Okay, so we will move on to reports. And we can start with the Arts Council report. Administrator Snyder, do you have information on that or have they not met?
They have not met recently. We're looking to. We're at Marlboro.
That's true. All right. CERT, Chief Burst?
Yes. Month of April, CERT met for a total of 478 hours at meetings and training. So they had a total of 478 hours.
Economic Development Work Group, Commissioner Colbert?
The biggest update for this evening is the names that will be put forth for the Board. I can mention the names or wait until.
Wait till.
We get to that business item.
All right. Events Committee, Commissioner Lot has not joined us yet.
No, she has not.
John, is Commissioner Lot with you?
She has not joined.
Okay. Administrator Snyder, do you, are you with her?
Yeah, I can report for them. The next meeting is going to be Thursday, June 1, 7:00 PM. It's multiple. The Hall, discussing events for the summer and they all just closed up tomorrow.
All right, we'll move on to the Green Team report. Commissioner Hansett?
Green Team, we are working on a date for the dedication for a gentleman that started it back in the day. We'll report on more information when it comes to fruition. Phase two is complete. We basically almost doubled the size of the garden. The fences are, most of the seedlings are planted. We just need to do some chicken wire work and that'll kind of wrap that up, that phase two. And we are working on a weekly calendar for garden events. In other words, planting and general maintenance and watering and all that. So we'll try to keep posted on that, online, Facebook kind of stuff. So we're working on that in the moment. Thank you.
The Greenwell Consulting Report, I actually, I don't know if you've spoken with them recently, but I spoke with them today. So they have a wrap-up report from the legislative session and they asked if they should present it tonight or if they should present it in June. And I asked whether they presented it in June because we have the budget tonight and I wanted us to be able to focus on that. So I hope that's okay with everyone. Then we'll move on to Historical Committee. They have, they were attended Marlboro Day. It was very successful. Talked to a lot of people. They have revised bylaws and sent those in to us. So we will look at those at the next meeting on June 12. And I will have us go into Commissioner Reports and I will lead us off. So the big thing that happened this month was Marlboro Day. It was successful despite having to cancel it for rain that never came. You don't have to be a weatherman to work at Town Hall. So some other things that we did this month was created an odor reporting tool. I hope that when everyone, I know we all kind of sometimes walk outside and we smell a little. So when you smell that, if you can go onto the website and fill out the odor reporting tool, it's going to ask you for your address and all that stuff because that's what they need. We're going to be giving that data to the landfill and they're going to be working with us to try to identify what specific activities we smell and mediate them. So I also attended a cool event, which was called Be a Firefighter for a Day. It was hosted by the Prince George's County Volunteer Fire and Rescue Association. I learned a lot. I learned that they are in need of recruiting new volunteers. So we're going to work with them on that. I attended a meeting at Sheriff Carr's office on municipal collaboration and how we can engage youth. We deployed Park Mobile on our meters, which is making it easier for you guys to pay the parking meter and it's the same as DC and the county. I worked in the community garden, which was fun and we got a lot done. So thank you, Commissioner Hansett. I was invited to attend Adaptive Maryland Day at Promise Landing Farm and I was able to learn a lot about adaptive, adoptions we can make to make things more friendly for every user, including our website. I had some good discussions about that. I issued three proclamations, one for Mental Health Awareness Month, one for Jewish American Jewish Heritage Month, and one for Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. I attended Career Day at Frederick Douglass High School. The kids were great. The kids were excited. So that's very exciting. Attended the PG CMA meetings and their Legislative Committee meetings. I attended a business roundtable with the Nigerian Chamber of Commerce. They are interested in potentially, hi Commissioner Lot, potentially looking at investing in Upper Marlboro. I met with the Prince George's County Redevelopment Authority, as well as VCAO, SOZA, on the downtown development and economic development. And we talked about that. And I met with our annexation attorney to go over annexation and attended a cybersecurity roundtable for MML and I learned some cool things that are helpful to us. This is my report. I will turn it over to Commissioner Colbert.
So for this month, just a couple of things. First, so attended Marlboro Day. Just want to thank you all, the volunteers, town staff, and for helping. Preeminent event in the town that I'm. Also attended the Prince George's County Municipal Association meeting. We continue our adventure as a town within the body. And also hosted or did a guided walking tour with Prince George's County Tourists and ambassadors and partners. Walking through downtown. The town. Part of the series that they're doing on all the municipalities. Could be a part of it.
Commissioner Hansett?
Ah, yes. So I also attended Marlboro Day. It was great to see all the town residents out there enjoying themselves. So thank you for coming. Also this month, I was set up to pay the town bills. I've been checking in, paying them daily or every other day at least. And I've attended kind of informal budget meetings with the mayor and town administrator. And that's up to this month. Thank you.
Sherlock. Hello, everyone. Sorry, I wasn't able to attend Marlboro Day, but I did go home to see my mom since we had a rain date. So I do have, just want to talk briefly about the Family Fun Day. We want to do something July 8. Is that correct, Al? We haven't finalized what we want to do, but we want to have like a basketball event for the youth. And we want to have, yes, something in the park where we do some water balloons or something like that and have some popsicles for the kids, just to have the community come out. And we're thinking about doing it over there by the townhouses. Townhouses over there, part of the town? Yeah, yeah, yeah. The town, this is a small playground over there. We're thinking about hosting it there. We just need permission from the HOA. The other thing is we are also working on, and we will, we would like to solicit volunteers. If anyone wants volunteer, Andre, maybe you want to help with basketball? And then we have, sorry, the cookout. We want to do a back-to-school cookout for the whole community. We want everyone to come out. We were trying to get book bags, stuffed book bags for the children. So we also need volunteers and donations for that. And that's going to be August 26. And you'll see more on the constant content. That's all. Thank you. We need to add the approvals.
We need to add the approvals to the June, or the June meeting for the dates. John, did you get those dates down so you can add them to the agenda? I got them down. I'll give them to you tomorrow.
I got them. Thank you.
All right. Follow us. So we will move into business. Is anyone online, John?
I do not have anyone online.
All right. So we are going to go through the business. I'm just going to update Commissioner Lot that we tabled items F and G because we weren't able to meet ahead of time. Those we'll just, we'll do on the 12th. Then for the public, if you want to comment on any item, you will come to the podium. You will have three minutes to comment. It is comment and we will take notes and we will have discussion amongst ourselves about that if we need to make changes. If you have, when you come up for these business items, your comments have to be related to the specific business item. And if you have just kind of a general public comment to make, then that will be at the end. I think that explains the process. When you come up to the podium, just say your name and the street that you live on. And we will get started with Ordinance 2023-03 FY24 Budget. Clerk Hoatsen, can you read that into the record, please?
Will do. Ordinance 2023-03 Session Regular Town Meeting, introduced April 25, 2024. Date enacted May 23, 2023. Excuse me, it was 2023. An ordinance relating to adopting and approving the budget for the fiscal year 2024, along with the corresponding tax levies and to set forth compensation for employees and officers, and to establish certain procedures for reviewing and amending same, as more particularly set forth herein.
Thank you. Administrator Snyder, do you want me to, or do you want to take us? I think the slides are coming to kind of go over it a little bit. John, do you want to take us through the slides?
Will do.
So the budget, we, has a budget book. That goes with. And explains things. And in that budget book, there's a section on demographics. And I wanted to highlight that because understanding our demographics understands who we're serving and how best to serve them. For example, half of our households have children living in them. How many, you know, how are, how are we serving those households that have children? Those people, they can't come necessarily to this meeting. They're cooking dinner and getting to bits of it. 60 of our residents are 65 years and older. How are we serving those residents through the budget? 115 residents are children. How are we serving them? So that's why I wanted to show those demographics. You can kind of see residents by age broken down in categories. You can see that our biggest age demographic is 30 to 39 years of age. And then we, I also have residents by race broken down that will show you that the majority of our population identifies as either black or African-American, with about 27% identifying as white. And we have 5% identifying as two or more races and 7% as some other race. We have some smaller percentages of American Indian, American Indian and Alaskan native and Asian. So it's important to kind of think about how we're representing the public and, you know, how we're making sure that we consider everyone. That's why that slide is up there. If you want to go to the next one, John? So this is in February, was it February, I think, guys? That we adopt, the Board adopted goals and priorities that were meant to guide the budget and how we were going to prioritize funding. And those goals included flood mitigation and safety, safe and modern roadways, and increased recreation opportunities and economic development. In the next slide, you can see how the funding matches with those priorities. So we have, a lot of this funding is grant funding or bond bill funding from the state. We have $450,000 bond bill for roadway design and surveying and to beginning to pave our roads. And that falls under, it does fall under economy too, but that felt like a stretch. I put it under flooding because we're going to be addressing stormwater when we do that. Keeping our roadways modern and recreation because we will be providing sidewalk and pedestrian connections. $10,000 for annexation. It is important for us to grow. It is important for us to have some influence over what happens on the borders of the town. And we are, and we can talk about this later too, but we are seeing increasing crime in the nation, in the region, and that is impacting our boundaries. And while we have a pocket of safety here, some of the people who are living on the edges of that pocket would feel a lot safer if the pocket was a little bigger. So we also have salary for a grant writer because we want to make sure that our funding is coming from as many sources as possible. We pay taxes to the state. We pay taxes to the federal government. We would like to see some of those taxes come back to us for the programs that are important. We have a $720,000 grant from the state, DNR, and that is for the supply hut and playground. That is next door. And that is coming. It is good for economy and recreation. We have a $500,000 grant for open space. This is to purchase some land that will become trail, a trail network, and it will connect downtown to residential areas. So it will, our economic development firm was like, yes, this is going to make a huge difference. We have 17,000, is that what I'm seeing for community events? The number's over it. Community events, they improve our image. They're good for the economy because people think, oh, this cute shop is here. And they're recreation. I don't know what that last one is. Economic development, that's what it is, I think. 20,000 for economic development firm. John, if you could go to the next slide, we have a few more. We have the 275,000 bond bill for parking improvements and that will primarily be at the Church Street Parking Lot, though there will be other improvements downtown. $50,000 community legacy grant for business improvements, which is our downtown, the thought improvements and business improvements. Salary for an events coordinator to increase our recreation opportunities. And 20, oh, the economic development firm is there, so I don't know. Anyway, we can go on to the next slide, just so you can see how that matches up. So these are our revenues. And so you can see that we have a lot of revenues coming in from grants. The biggest item is taxes, fines, licenses, permits, intergovernmental and miscellaneous. And that, the graph on the right shows how that taxes piece of the pie breaks down. And one of the goals that the Board has had is to try to figure out how to diversify both that tax piece of the pie and the pie in general. So you can see how that looks. And we can go to the next slide. So this kind of shows a breakdown of the expenses, how they're distributed. We've got general government, public works, public safety, the speed camera. The speed camera is broken out separately because those funds are restricted in how they can be used. So they can't just be used for straight public safety. And then, um, the capital improvement investments that the town is making are about 4% of our budget. Uh, and that there are capital improvements involved. That's the last slide on the budget. Administrator Snyder, or, um, Treasurer Hanchett, do you have anything kind of to add about?
Nothing at this time.
Um, so I can open it up to commissioner's discussion and then we can kind of let the public come and chat with us about it. Does anyone have any comments?
Not necessarily a comment that I haven't raised many times before. I continue to encourage us to, and diversify our income streams beyond raising tax rates year over year. I understand that this is something that has been, that was in place prior to this board being seated and it has kept a plan to get us to a certain point. Continue each year to encourage us to look at ways of diversifying. In particular, uh, we do have a large taxable base in this town that we need to figure out through conversations or through engagement with others, how we can get that into a place where we can begin collecting revenue on.
I'm working on that. Any other comments up here? Okay, so we are going to let the public come up and you will have three minutes. You'll provide us your comments. Um, and probably the best thing to do is for us to just listen to all the comments and then have a discussion amongst ourselves. So, um, just say your name and address. Can you come up?
I have a sheet, I have a sheet, whatever.
Oh, there's, there's a sign-up sheet and people signed up?
It's for the attendees of the meeting.
Yeah, no, we don't, we, yeah, it's okay. You can come up one at a time.
My account shot, first street. Um, I was looking at the, uh, April budget and I noticed compared it against the March budget. And I noticed the fines, licenses and permit in the original budget changed from March to April. Went from 27376 to 524783. And I was just wondering if there was a reason for that. The other one is that under the over budget, under budget, they're carrying a number under gray, uh, grant of 940052, but if you actually subtract those two numbers, that number is 890052.
Are you talking about the current budget?
The current budget, yes, the April budget.
The FY23 budget?
Yes.
Okay, so right now the public comment period is for the FY24.
Okay, so then for that one, um, I noticed that the expenses, when you add them up, the number that, um, the number that's provided is balanced, is the budget is incorrect. If you add these numbers, that number is 4,23372. So it doesn't look like it's actually balanced. I don't know where 449220 came from. If you add up all of those stuff. What page are you looking at?
Sorry. It's, it's the capital improvement and the spreadsheet is not in the budget. We'll have to add it.
That's all I had was just the mixes in the budget.
Hi, uh, Joe Ripley, Old Mover Pike. Heard you mention that you were going to, uh, improve the, our town's parking lot. And I don't know if the town has changed what the policy was on that parking lot. It used to be that, um, they tried to intentionally keep it, keep the rates low so that way employees at the various businesses in town could get long-term parking there. Um, so that way they wouldn't tie up street parking and other parking around the town. And so they're actually, they didn't want to spend massive amounts of money on it that wouldn't be recouped. I don't know what sort of rates you're charging there, but obviously you can charge more than parking. Gracious. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alma Purat. I live at, um, Old Crane Highway. Um, and I wanted to ask about the trail and the sidewalk. And then it's the budget and all the loops I walked from the town hall from here going down on Old Crane to the courthouse. Doesn't make any sense that there is no access and it's not good. Also, there are plenty of high school students that walk past our house going to their bus stop, and I don't understand how that's even allowed. Another thing that I am interested in knowing is, is there any budgeting for, um, the abandoned buildings that's in town and that even that need to take care of? There is a parking lot that is not being used, it's just closed off. I just think of the county seat. We should be representing the county in a way that, um, people admire us and they think, wow, this is how the county should be looking for every other town, not just here. And so I don't think that right now we have the space to show to the rest of the county because we have abandoned buildings and we have parking lots, trash everywhere. No access, no, no sidewalks. So, um, I don't know if that's in here anywhere and if the new residents, I'm sorry, I'm just ignorant to.
You are not. Don't say that about yourself. These are both county issues and this is part of the meeting that I talked about in my report with county. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online, John?
There's no one online.
All right. So I just want to, so the, the missing portion of this, we're going to have to adopt this budget with the CIP spreadsheet being added to it because that's not on it right now and that's why the numbers don't end up. With regard to town parking, we will put that under advisement as we improve the law. Does anyone have anything? Are we ready to make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-03, the fiscal year 24 budget with the addition of the CIP spreadsheet? Do you have a comment?
I'm sorry, I.
Go ahead.
I'm just wondering how you can approve the budget when we don't have a, uh, employment agreement? We do have, there's no authorization from the county.
It's authorized in the budget.
Do we have a number?
Right, it's the number that we, we put in after the last closed session and we discussed it. And that was what we put into the budget. And it's in the contract, which we will talk about. Item B. And if you have, if you have speaking of charts that aren't correct, if you have Fridays, that the police sheet is on the chart. You're now on the one thing you see, so. Brain date for Marlboro Day plus budget. All right. Paige, you're going to be on page. Do I have a motion to approve ordinance 2023-03 FY24 budget with the addition of the CIP spreadsheet put into the budget ordinance? There a second? John, Clerk Hosen, would you call the roll?
Will do. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert. Commissioner Hanchett. Commissioner Lot. Motion carries.
All right, we'll move on to item B, which is the budget book for FY24. I'm actually, I wanted to be able to discuss it, but I'm going to make a request because on Saturday I brought this budget book with me to Marlboro Day. Everyone knows I love the budget book. I love talking to people about the budget. Um, and my fellow commissioners talked to people about the budget and people had questions. They said, what is this line? What is that line made up of? What is this? And, and so there were more questions. And I would like to ask you all if we can table the approval of this book to June 12th so that I can answer those questions in the book, so I can add more information to the book before we approve it. But I do want to give the public a chance to tell me, yeah, give us comments, more things you want, might want me to add to it in the next few weeks. So, um, if you have comments, please hop up and let me know.
As you asked, you're asking. I believe that it should be tabled so that we could add, in, in any way it's a threat for the spirit of the county.
Right.
So yes, I think that we should table it.
Do you have any questions that I can explain in it? I love to explain.
I haven't had a chance to really go through it like on the line since I've, it's just been a while.
That's okay. You guys can email me questions too. Just don't do it on like June 11th, then I probably won't have time to answer. Any other? All right. Then we, is there a motion to table the budget book FY24? There a second? Clerk Hosen, would you call the roll, please?
Will do. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanchett. Mr. Colbert. Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Motion carries.
So we'll move on to ordinance 2023-04 Personnel. Clerk Hosen, would you read that into the record for us, please?
Will do. Ordinance 2023-04 Session Regular Town Meeting Introduced April 25th, 2023. Date enacted May 23, 2023. An ordinance to amend ordinance 2022-02 to reestablish and change certain aspects of a personnel system with certain guidelines, pay grade, salaries, standards and procedures for the employees of the town of Upper Marlboro.
Thank you. Administrator Snyder, do you want to?
The board's been discussing this ordinance over the past couple of months. Uh, it's making some minor updates to the town personnel, um, systems ordinance. Um, and the changes are in bold or capitalized and then. So long as it passes, we'll do a final version, version 4, but it's just make the finer.
Thank you. Any comments from the commissioners? Anyone online?
There is no one online.
You guys can.
No one online.
If you guys have comments, please come up to the podium and. All right, there are no public comments on that, so I will ask for a motion to approve ordinance 2023-04 Personnel. Is there a second?
President Franklin.
Yes, you can call the roll.
President Franklin. Mr. Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanchett.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye. Hold on, Tommy didn't vote.
Yeah, I couldn't hear. It's weird. It's delayed action tonight.
It's the delay.
It's the delay.
It's going four ayes.
Okay. Motion carries.
There is, a delay, yeah. So we'll move on to Resolution 2023-10 Employment Agreement with Chief of Police. And it is, I think we're on page 78. So Clerk Hosen, I'm going to ask you to read the, um, read that into the record.
Will do. Resolution 2023-10 Session Regular Town Meeting Dated May 23rd, 2023. A resolution of the Town Board of Commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro to approve an employment agreement for the Chief of Police.
Thank you. So this is the resolution to approve it. The contract is on the next page. Um, and I just, I would like to say something before we vote and take comment. So four and a half years ago, this town had pretty much no police department. We had one part-time police officer. That is what Chief Burst walked into on his first day. Things were disorganized, unprofessional and understaffed. He has hired this in the last four and a half years to bring the department up to its high professional standards and into the 21st century. He now supervises five employees and has recently added evening shifts to keep us safe for longer through our own staff. He has been specifically requested to provide testimony at the state level because they trust his professionalism and knowledge. He brings us 30 years of law enforcement experience, is now 34, I guess. He's frequently asked by other municipalities, can your police chief come and talk to my police chief or give me some advice? Uh, and he always is willing to do that. And I am always told that that advice was good and they really appreciate it. But he has turned the image of this town's police force around in four and a half years, which is impressive. He has done this despite the fact that there has been a concerted effort by a small portion of the population to suggest that things aren't being done, despite the fact that there are no reasons provided related to job performance. He is not doing anything. The employment agreement that we have before us tonight pays our police chief slightly less than the average wage for police chiefs in Maryland, according to the Maryland Municipal League data from February of 2023. He also does not receive an employment package and MML estimates that that cost of an employment package for chiefs is averaging at $17,000, further lowering the cost of his service to the town. The pay reflects an annual increase given to Chief Burst by four mayors throughout the time that he has served here. The agreement ensures that we will continue to benefit as a town from his professional, fair and equitable services for the next five years. I believe we should pass this without any difficulty. Do any other commissioners have comments they would like to make before we hear public comment?
I do. Um, we did talk about, um, the five-year employment. We did, um, talk about it being changed to two, to three years. Talk about that.
But the last closed session, we had talked about five years. Five years of what came out of the last closed session?
No, we didn't. And it was, uh, Tom, Tom and I had said.
I left the call and Kevin came on. I wasn't there.
No, I didn't.
Commissioner Colbert, do you remember?
We did discuss it. I, we, I came out of it at five years. Frank, you came out of it at five years. Do you remember Commissioner Lot? You came, you had to do.
Yeah, and Tom also had said three years.
That was.
I wasn't there.
He wasn't there?
No, I'm talking about at the end of the call, Tom. I'm talking about you initially said three years when we, we all talked about.
What is, what is your opinion?
I said, Tom, for sure.
I just want to keep it after this. And it was already decided, I didn't have a call. I was at work, I didn't want to be there. Attorney was involved.
Yeah, and the attorney also disagreed with the five years.
The attorney noted that that was a political and not a legal opinion and it is not his job to provide us with political opinion.
You're right, he did. He, but he also said that he didn't agree with the timeframe of the, um, of the severance package either, which was.
Right, so he, he provided us, he provided us with his political opinions despite being asked only to provide legal opinions. And we will let you do public comment, um, when we're done discussing, so.
So he did have some, uh, apprehension because he felt like that it was, uh, the salary was overpaid.
And that was.
And he said, it's up to y'all, yes. But he also said in his legal opinion, he couldn't really tell us what to do, but the numbers were public knowledge. And I don't know, he talked about all the, the chief burst also showed a lot of things that he did do and how he brought the town up to code. But my, I guess my biggest issue would be the town, the size of the town is pretty small, and this footprint is small, so the numbers reflect a bigger population. Also, we did not get, seek any other employers. We never, we never put anything out. We put it, we put something out for everything else. I don't oppose Chief as a person. I think he's a good person, but I'm just thinking about the best interest of the town as far as giving someone that amount of money. And we are trying to hit roads in the town. We're trying to do things in the town, and we can't do them if we don't have the money. Do them.
I don't want to talk over anyone else.
I'll say, I, I, I hear your point. I see where you're coming from. I think for me, one, the negotiations on the salary, the length of severance package piece and all that, you know, we had those conversations and that. For me, while yes, we are in terms of square mileage, in terms of the footprint, a small town, we fit in a pocket that's much larger than just the town.
But we do have, I'm going to interrupt your thought. Go ahead.
So with the fact that we have county courthouse, which takes a major real estate in downtown, we have county correctional facility right on the outside of town. We have a lot of activity that's happening within the county, around the county. I mean, I'll, I'll say, you know, a couple of weeks ago, maybe about a month ago, there was a drive-by shooting less than a mile away from my front door, you know, from where I, you know, play with my daughter in my front yard, which means it was closer to some of the other residents that are in town. Fact that we have been able to enjoy, you know, safe pocket, as you called it earlier, has speaks a testament to the level of work that has been done to make sure that the town is safe, to make sure that the relationships that are maintained with other police units around the county are maintained. And I think it's important that we have someone who has the continuity that can continue that plan going forward.
Well, I don't have, I don't oppose what Chief has done and what he has brought to the police department. But I'm just, my interest is that we didn't bid it out or, or put it out there so someone else can possibly, you know, apply for the job. We didn't do things that I think we've done with every other contract. We did that with the, with the, the media person. We did that with a number of contracts, but we didn't do that with this particular one. And so that's, that's.
I mean, this isn't really a contract. This is an employee, Chief Burst is a person who works for the town.
But it is a contract because we can't.
It's an employment agreement, and it's not.
It, it is a contract because we can't get out of it for five years. If we wanted to get out of it, we could not get out of it. We'd have to pay him for nine whole months if we wanted to change course.
Right, so but a contract, like the media guy.
I know what a contract is.
Right, but what I'm saying is our media guy is a firm. Yes, he's one person, but it's the firm that we're contracted with. This is not contracting with a firm. This is continuing the employment of an existing employee who has done an exemplary job at his job.
So then why do we need an employee, employee agreement? We don't have one for anyone else.
That is a great question. So employee, employment agreements are becoming standard for department heads. The reason that our town administrator and our director of public works don't have contracts is because they have worked here for nine years. If we had to bring on a town administrator or a director of public works, they would be looking for a contract. They would be looking for, I don't know, the two of them know what the standard is for their industry of how long the contracts are, but these department head positions, they are becoming, the, the competition for them is becoming much more fierce, and so the pay is becoming much higher, and there is a contract requirement that those employees are asking for.
So how come we don't make it all unified, dress right, dress? If he has, sorry, if he has a contract, how come we can't implement that for the other employees? Because if it's, if it's the thing to do, and they've been here for nine years, he's been here for at least five, and then we now with another five, it'd be 10 years.
So we could write employment agreements with our town administrator and our director of public works, but they have not asked us for those. So this protects the town and ensure, this employment agreement protects the town and ensures that we have the continuity of government, the quality of policing that we have been receiving for the past five years. It means we're going to get that for another five years. And if our, one of our directors came to us and said, hey, I'd also like a contract, or I'm sorry, I'd also like an employment agreement, because that's what it is, because they're an employee, then we would probably have to consider that because they can, they could go, they, I'm sure, that, don't tell me this, but I'm sure they're getting phone calls from other towns. It is a really competitive environment out there. It really is.
One more thing I'd like to say is, forward to your, the pocket that we're in, we're surrounded by county police. We're surrounded by the sheriff's department. We do have other branches of law enforcement that step in when our police department is not available. So I think it's, we're all connected here, and we all help each other.
I think a lot of policing is preventative, and how often do you see Prince George County police driving down the street, what time of day?
Well, they're driving down the street because people have been complaining.
Think about it.
I, I am thinking about it. People were complaining that we weren't seeing them, so now we see them. And I can honestly say, they are controlling. So I just need to say that.
The people that I talk to, that, there are some people who sit in their window, like I talked to a disabled person who sits in his window, he's never not seen the police controlling. He has seen the police over the past several years, patrolling all the time. My husband, he works in our upstairs front room. He is like, yeah, they're driving by all the time. A lot of the complaints about not seeing the police are coming from people who are working in DC during the day or who are working in a back room of their.
Well, I worked in DC during the day, and I, I still see them patrolling. I do see them patrolling. When I come home from work, they're coming up and down the street. I see them in the morning before I go to work.
I know you see them a ton, because you and I are always walking around town, so.
I do see them every day.
So then they, we've been seeing them.
Yes, I have.
We're talking about an employee that's been exemplary, never been reprimanded. Would you terminate someone that's doing a good job or not? We do a contract for someone that's doing a great job? I just.
I don't think.
Don't see the basis behind it.
I don't think termination would.
And if you go to the Maryland, uh, correctly, I'm, I think the, there's a website that shows the salaries.
I saw it.
And we're doing okay. I mean, we need to keep our police department at a certain level while we expand. We can't expand and then have the police department, and that's state law. We can't expand without the proper police department.
We can't expand without.
The fact that it is the way it is now, we need to work out, and then we can build the town out.
Well, we can't expand unless we pass the annexations, and we have not gotten to that point yet.
I understand that, but we need to keep our police force, keep it the way it is. Add one officer, does we expand, yes, but we can't just have one officer and continually expand. Can't do that.
I'll open it. Well, there you go.
Yeah, you can open it up for the public. Everyone has three minutes. Please state your name and the street you live on.
Uh, Joe, I'm Old Marlboro Friday. I am wondering if the town commissioners are familiar with the town charter, specifically section 8215 Powers and Duties? Because part of that was in the where address for this, but part that was left off is all office, department, and agency heads shall serve as a pleasure of the president. By setting the severance package at over $10,000, you make it so that way there's required a board vote to remove this person. And so that would seem to violate the charter right there. And so you are, yes, that may be the normal now, but I think you need to have a charter amendment before you try and pass this. And I don't, I don't know how this got approved in the first place, I missed that meeting, but that's concerning. And I think there was mention that no one had actually complained about the chief, so let me give an actual complaint that I wasn't able to make because we were doing a virtual meeting at the time, when Brian Bodytrager complained about receiving a citation for his property. The chief then went, well, you know, okay, that would come out of five, but, you know, just looking at the picture, I can cite all of these other things. And that's not how the ordinance was written. The ordinance was you have to be cited for a specific thing, and just saying, okay, well, we don't like your property is not how that ordinance works. So let me be the person to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm from Old Crane Highway, new to the town. I'm a little confused about why we're even discussing the retention. That has never had any issues. Usually we don't even talk about that. We just continue on somebody's employment. So can you give me an example about why you want to do three years versus five years? How was that really?
Because I don't want to.
Hold on.
I'm going to answer, because I feel like you are new to the town, right? First time I've ever seen you at a meeting, and I can say that we were, we're paying the chief right now $100,000, and we're going up on his salary. And I think that, and that's public knowledge.
We're paying him more than that because he's.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, but I'm just saying, that's, yeah.
But we're taking up her comment time, so.
Okay, so, so basically, my thought process is I have no personal issues with the chief. I don't think he's as bad as he is.
Well, we're discussing, right? We're discussing.
Yeah, but, yeah, we are, we are. I'm talking about.
You're asking, okay, hey, it's her, it's her comment time, and we're not supposed to be answering questions.
A good resource that has made improvements versus a resource that has done nothing of part-time leave, I've never felt unsafe in this town as much as I hate it. I don't like it here. This, Sarah can tell you that. I want to move back to Virginia because of the garbage, because of the lack of sidewalks, because of the abandoned buildings, because there's so many reasons. But one reason that I have for staying is that I feel safe. My kids, at whatever time I go outside, I live in a very goofy highway. I, to be honest, never see the police drive by my house. I'm not standing out the window, but I certainly do not feel unsafe. And I think it's insulting to the police chief that if he has never had any issues, we would be opposed to rehiring him, and the commitment is that he has to.
So I can piggyback off of that.
Wait, we want it, we get it, we got it. Let's public, give public comment.
First, let me recognize, uh, I really don't, Chief, but this contract is very controversial. Having had experience with the chief before that, Chief Canel and Chief Washington, frankly, you know, questioned the issue, there was a big problem, all these people fired in August of 2019. I don't know what happened, but we have a medical, oh, it's possible. Something happened there, which is crazy. And the result of that was the chief was hired with this contract nobody ever saw, saw before. I don't know, probably since the beginning. Nobody ever saw a contract like. Reason why it's, it's turned or could fire everybody because they're all at will, okay? That's a good thing from my perspective, you know, having been a commissioner. Good thing to be able to fire somebody if you want to, not to give them any reason whatsoever. Good thing to govern, public government. You don't want to have to have all these people suing you all the time. Happened if you fire a policeman, fire him for no reason or interest. That's what you want. That's why this got, this contract is not even a contract. Charter. You should be able to fire somebody at will. I'm not saying that the chief should be fired. I like the chief. I like the chief. That doesn't mean you get to pay him $100,000. After 10 years, I think Chief Canel's top salary was $60,000. I don't really care what everybody else in the state thinks. It was either 60 or 70,000. After a long period of time, 2006, firing commissioners, 2016, Chief Washington. You don't give anybody five years. No, like you said, nobody else has five years. You kidding? And then finally, I mean, there's the, the issue of the contract itself, and then there's the issue of procedure of approving contracts in this town. I have all kinds of things that I could go through in history. I only have three minutes. I'll say, don't approve this contract, it's just four people, okay? Wait till you get the fifth person. If I was running again, and let's say I've done a run, just really use that as, as an argument against people that you're pushing this thing through without the required number of commissioners itself to make votes on these kinds of things. This is a very controversial. Thank you for listening.
I excuse Church Street. First of all, I'd like you to provide me the MML cost analysis for Chief.
We're not allowed to.
So if, without that information, I was able to go online and just look at police chiefs in different counties or different municipalities. It's public information, so it should be available. I know from my look at what I was seeing, I did not see the costs that we're providing for the chief. The other one is just that I, I agree that being the charter that all employees should be at will. The other one is, we went without the police for two years. And I have asked several times to be provided a report of when, when we're being reported for these police events, how many were responded by our town versus how many were responded by Prince George's County? And that information is not available. I feel that if it was more open for that information, that it would be easier to acknowledge the work that's being done. But right now, we're sharing that work with Prince George's County. And I, as a citizen, have no idea how many of the events that are being documented in our town report were actually handled by our police department versus the Prince George's County Department. I know most of the time that I have called, I have gotten Prince George's. So I, I would like to see a report of how many, how many, how many times our police responded to these events that are being documented under public safety. And the last one is the five years, two years, I believe it should be at will. I don't think that the next set of commissioners should be burdened with a five-year contract. Year to year is what everyone else works. Everyone else has an agreement to work at will. A 90-day, a nine-month severance sound exorbitant for any issues that we may come across. So again, I'm going to, I'm, I'm still going to ask, if you cannot provide me the MML cost analysis that you spoke of, then at least provide me a rationale for why I cannot, or provide me a link where I can get some information.
Sorry.
Of course, it's cost, our public knowledge. Okay, so I, I would really like that if you, if you all have done that work already, I would like that information.
Okay, sorry, that time is up.
That's fine, thank you.
I am going to just respond quickly. MML sells us that data. We are, the condition of us purchasing it is that we cannot share it publicly. I, I can ask, you know, I, I provided you the data I got off MML. All the other commissioners and the town administrator have seen that data. But I can't provide it publicly because then they're, if, if they sell it to municipalities and I give it to y'all, then it goes to all the other municipalities, and now they don't have to buy it, so MML won't sell it to us again. So I'm going to ask for the next resident to come, if you have comments to make.
Hello, again, Ellen B from Old Millboro. I'm always up here, so I was trying to get other people to speak who don't generally come to this. But what I want to say is a lot, so I'm going to try to do this in three minutes or less. Contracts, employee leave, at will, all of these things. Contracts, employee leave, at-will, all of these things can be done by an entity, right? Can all be done by an entity. However, I think what George was supposed to be saying is that this is basically a bad agreement contract, whatever you want to call it. Why? Because it is lopsided. Generally, agreements and contracts are win-win situations. This is not a win-win situation for the town. We have, she, he does a great job. He has brought us up. No one is questioning that. But we have to remember that we are a small town. We are growing. We want to grow more and more. The money that we're paying out, because we are just talking about a hundred and ten thousand dollars, but no, we're not. We're talking about the fact that he can get retirement, he can get annual leave, that's what it says here. Am I wrong?
He has no, he has annual leave, but he has no other benefits.
He has no, he doesn't have retirement. Well, since that is an agreement. So you want to make your agreement exactly what you're getting him or what you're giving you. Okay, so the indemnification. Do we indemnify an employee? Do we hold them harmless for any wrongdoing? That's what it says in this, that we are indemnifying, we are saying that whatever he does, we're going to take over the problem. Don't have to pay a thing. Even if he does something wrong, we're saying we're holding him harmless. Who wants to do that? Just challenge him. Also, he can take home a car. He has a car that he can take home and not just outside of the boundaries of the town, but the Washington metropolitan area, which includes Washington, DC, Baltimore, Virginia, great radius, and the town is paying for the maintenance of their car probably. But I don't know, didn't say anything about gas, but they're probably doing that too. So again, I'm not going to say too much, but I think you get my point. We need to focus over and really make this a good agreement contract, whatever you want to call it, employees be employees, whether you contract employee or not. But make it so that it's good for everyone, for not only the boroughs, but for the towns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Park Spring Branch Drive. Chief Burris was hired. I would not contest it, not if I'm board. Nobody asked me. I can do, if you question Singapore. I thought Madam was a contractor a year later. Uh, let's try them. To me, it's out of precedence that we should not have them. If you do not, thirty years, you will continue to do your job in this town. Uh, what is it, ten years? Or ten years? Eight? Okay. He's been doing his job. Nobody's saying he hasn't, and he's comfortable. I'm not starting on blast. It's the same way. Ten years, he's doing it. Either one of you had a contract to stay or go. We don't know whether Chief Burris is the right shift. I personally don't think so. That's just my personal opinion. I think if we owe it to the citizens of the town, who at least put on a search. His name goes into the head just like everybody else's. If he's as good and we feel, still feel he is as good as he is, we feel he is now, he shouldn't be having a problem. But why can't we at least look elsewhere? Why can't we at least say, okay, prove it? And a five-year contract? No. Two years max. You are, you are putting a two-year, a five-year contract on at least two more boards that you may not be on. Two years would be the max, if you have to go to a contract. There's no reason not to look elsewhere. It is fiscally responsible for us to do so. We do it with every contract that we have had, and that was that President Franklin's request. Every contract should be reviewed, and we should see if we have the right person for the right job. Why are we doing it here? Because he's an employee. And he's an employee who's being paid over a hundred thousand dollars a year. That's a big difference. You have, you have before, you are, you still do, government relations firms. We know exactly what they're going to give us, and we know how much we're going to pay them. And we know how long it's going to be. And we just didn't choose between three people. Why can't we do that here? Not saying he did anything wrong. He's been paid well for what he has been, what he has done.
Evening. Trace is own Old Memorial Pike. Full disclosure, police chief at another municipality. Been a police chief in a larger municipality and currently in a smaller municipality. Been in the town for sixteen years, has seen police services vary, but I say that they're a, they're a peak town. Did not know Chief first prior to becoming Chief, but do associate in Chief circles, if you will. And I often joke about seeing the red and blue lights around him. And often, they kind of like on Saturday, too. Just, you know, happy with his service, happy with the police officer's service, happy to be a resident of the town. That's one of the reasons I moved into town, because they have their own police department. As far as contracts go, very customary for Chief Police to have one. Not everyone has one. It is here. Good for retention. Police officers, they actually all over the place. They're jumping to part of the department. Everybody's raising salaries and people are moving all over the place. Happy with what you got.
Thank you. John, did anyone come online while we were receiving? If you have a comment, Ethan?
No, nobody came online.
I have a question. Frank, I live on Marbury Lane. I've been here a while, I believe. My first meeting, so I don't know back what everyone's talking about, but if it's, like, if you want to make a comment about the police or if you want to comment about the area.
For right now, just about the chief of police, but there will be a general comment.
Well, I did hear someone mention about, I guess, there's a difference between having a salary and being able to do extra things in the town. I don't know. I want to talk on right salary, but I guess a two-year contract would be good if it comes between being able to do other things in the town. I guess his salary is so high. I don't know how much his salary is, but I guess a shorter contract would help for competition and maybe, I guess that's what I would think. It's only about the police. There are other.
You'll have another chance. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. John, did anyone come online while we were taking in-house public comment?
No, nobody has come online.
Resposing public comment regarding chief of police. They just came in, so. Did you want to make a comment or are you?
So I had a question. I'm sorry. I apologize. That police looks like a question for the police chief in the department. How, uh, is, um, are you a resident of Apple Mall? How are, bench, or is any one of your staff resident of Apple Mall?
Town of Oklahoma.
The town of Rockmore, yeah, but greater Apple Mall. And how are benchmarks, and I probably missed it, I'm sorry, how are benchmarks based for evaluations or expectations? How is that, how is that determined and equivalent to pay or quality step increases, promotional potential for the staff? And just a little question.
Oh, we have, I'm sorry, we have employee review periods, and we have standard review forms. The police form is more complicated.
And those benchmarks or ratings determine kind of rate increases? Have been shared with the public?
Not everywhere. We don't get to see it.
Employee evaluations are considered personnel records, so they can't be made public for the employees.
And for the position itself, this is my last question, for the position itself. How do we judge the, the, uh, statistic of what has been done previously compared to now? We can't understand considering that's a personnel file to justify some of the, of salary itself.
I mean, the four mayors evaluated the chief of police, and four mayors gave him an annual raise. So that tells you that his personnel files are.
So to answer four mayors, since you can't answer personnel, four mayors gave him, tell me, and they all were exceeding satisfaction? All four? There was no question?
You want to share that on your own, you can do that. I can't do that. I can't do that.
So if that answers your question, you're right. Four mayor gave him the same evaluation, which was a high. All four times. All right, thank you.
So you weren't in here, so let me just say that we all say that Chief does a very good job. We take no, I mean, I take no, no pleasure in even, you know, feeling the way I feel, but I feel like the way I feel because I'm just, it's in the best interest of the town as far as the money is concerned. Him as an employee, I don't have any issues with him. I haven't heard anybody else have any issues with him. But I have heard residents have, you know, complaints or whatever, but they are very minimal. I haven't heard anything that would be, um, like a real strike against his person and what he's doing, you know what I mean? I haven't heard anything severe, but I have heard complaints. But other than that, I don't think anyone here can say that he didn't do a good job with picking up the police department from what I saw and from the records that he showed me, which was basically nothing, you know? So he had to put a lot of things together. So he did earn his pay. But as of right now, we're going, the pay is going a little.
Comment period is over. Were you okay, Scott?
Oh, yes. I just wanted to fill in this out. I just wanted to know quantifiable data that justifies.
When all the comment period is over, I'm going to talk about some of the things that have come up. Yeah, sorry. I'm not sorry, George.
Alex has from Church Street. I'm from a police forum board, talking about the first 2021 survey, so it's not that, that recent, but here's a whole. One, one contact specifically with the chief across the state nation. Approximately four in ten chiefs in the first 2021 survey reports that each contract or the formal employment agreement. Four in ten. All those chiefs with a contract, more than half had a severance agreement as part of their arrangement. Only about eleven percent had statutory tenure protection, meaning that five of all the chiefs are appointed at a set term or can keep their positions for as long as they like. Chiefs with statutory tenure protection were primarily from Connecticut, Massachusetts, Missouri, Nebraska, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, Wisconsin. Employment contracts are the most common in the Northeast and the West among agencies with two hundred and fifty or fewer sub-employees. Among the largest agencies with more than a thousand, contracts are offered less than five percent of the time. I, well, I'm joking. I just say, you know, maybe make it two years or three years. I've seen that around here. Five years just seems a little unusual, and it seems unusual with the data backing it. Thank you.
One second, I just want to make sure no one's online. And then we're going to close the comments and discussion.
Nobody online.
But he's online. Okay. Comments are closing. Okay.
My question is.
Okay.
Years, and nobody has said anything other than Mr. Herkley with his comment, that I've done anything or I've not done my job. So if we look back, we're at the four and a half year mark. So where has anything changed? So if I was here for three years, four years, ten years, I've done my job. That's what we're at. That's what you all want, right? Y'all want me to do my job. So that's what I've done. So I'm just saying, in my own defense, that I've done my job, I've done what you all asked, and I'm even doing more. You all have stuff that you didn't even know that you had. You have officers here, days and evenings, what you asked for. It takes time to get them there, but we have to have the resources and time to do it. So I have this book right here. It says from 2019 to present. So if anybody wants to look at it, it's still free. So it explains to you what I have done since I've been here. And the reason why I put this book together was because I know from leadership, which this is not my first leadership job, that you do this to show people what you've done, which the board has seen. Again, I got here, there was no leadership transition. When I took over this position, there were no full-time police officers. No, not one. I've hired five in three years, not four years. I did it in three years. So I brought the police cars up to code. One of the cars caught fire in the parking lot, and the former mayor refused to go out and look at it. I've done my job. So in my own defense, I'm telling you, if you want to come up here and look at what I've done, period. And then ask the question that you're asking, because you're asking it without talking to me. Nobody in here calls me and asks me any questions. Always at public comment. That's the only time anybody talks to me. So if anybody wants to see what I've done over the past four and a half years, really three years, it's right here in the book. So feel free to come up and look.
After, after the meeting. We can't go now. I do want to address a few things that came up in the comments. So the first thing I want to say is that these contracts, and this has, this has been confirmed by another police chief, right? And I'm going to just ask the town administrator and the director of public works to tell me how many of your coworkers in the last probably two to three years is probably when this has started, I'm guessing, or you can tell me how many years it's been and how frequent you guys are seeing contracts for people in your position.
I see quite often for town administrators, because they're hired over the past two to three years. I would say probably fifty percent. I mean, we're not all swapping contracts. It's hard to tell. I know when people think people are hired, it's due to the municipalities, you see the contract.
Director Bond, is it common in, for directors of public works, and like, when did you start to see the shift to it becoming more common?
Yes, Mayor, it is very common. I've definitely seen it pretty much since the pandemic. I'm not sure of the terms of the contracts, but that is quite a bit of, pretty much the conversation at our directors' meetings also.
Thank you. So I just want to clarify that, again, when I talk to other mayors, they're having contracts. And the contracts are protecting the town, too. So if we sign a contract for two years, he can leave. He's doing a good job. Everyone in this room has acknowledged that he's doing a good job. At, and there is rapid change in the environment. I just saw an Instagram ad recently for people to walk off the street and become police officers for Prince George's County, almost seventy thousand dollars. That is what it, this is what it's costing. All of these positions are rapidly increasing in price, and the competition is getting steep. So five years protects the town and ensures continuity. With regard to termination, termination is if there is a reason to fire the chief, if there is a performance reason, overtime, performance. If there is a performance reason, overtime, performance evaluations are bad, or there is an incident, this contract allows us to terminate the police of chief, that, that the chief of police for cost, not simply because we don't feel like maybe he's a good fit. And I do want to say that the elements of people, there, one thing that the chief of police has had to deal with, and, and many of our employees in this town, who are employees of the color, have to deal with, is that many of them are asked how they got here, why they belong here. And it is implied that they don't fit in because of the color of their skin. I'm not saying anyone in this room does that. I am simply saying I have heard it said, and he has had to tolerate that for four and a half years. I'm also going to point out that as we have, the professionals who do director jobs have said, these are, are customary. Yes, in 2021, there weren't as many, but now there's a lot of them. And I will tell you, like, people have tried to recruit me to be their town manager with a contract. Like, it, it is really competitive. So I'm going to let the other commissioners say their piece that they would like to, and then I'm going to call for votes.
Just want to, she can make one more comment on the continuity piece. I mean, we brought up several times in comment that, you know, we're up every two years. There's no guarantee that the four of us will be here, uh, after, after November. And that's fine. That's under change. And the fact that this chief has gone through four mayors in the, in the tenure that he's had here so far. If we are to think about the continuity of the town, the continuity of a public safety plan, there has to be some level of, I don't want to say of, of, of stasis in order to make sure that the things that we're all agreeing are being done, have been done, that folks have asked for, that are getting done, continue and grow.
Sorry, I kind of couldn't hear you.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, you're good.
Um, and that really has to be something that's taken into consideration as well. I really think that if you're having a conversation about the town growing, the area, the changing environment, things like that, with the protections in place where, again, if the chief or is not doing his job, we don't pay severance pay if there is a reason, if there is cause for termination, which would be the case in most employment situations. Yes, there, there are at-will employment, but if you are, if you are fired for anything other than a, a general cause, folks are able to sue their employer for wrongful termination. That is a thing that exists. That is not anything different than how the severance language put in this contract. So that's, that's what I just want to leave there.
In terms of contract length, I think it's industry standard, and I think different industries, different sectors have different standards. And I think the, the town of Upper Marlboro is following the standard in that, uh, capacity. Thank you.
All right. Um, is there a motion to approve Resolution 2023-10, employment agreement with chief of police?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Coateson, would you call the roll, please?
President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Hansett.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Same.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll move on to Resolution 2023-11, TASER contract. Um, and this is, was authorized in the budget that we just approved. And this is the contract to purchase tasers. Um, chief, first, can you tell us why we need to purchase tasers and all of this?
So basically, um, in 2018, I purchased, uh, uh, tasers. So every five years, the tasers is, is refreshed. You have a chief sitting in the room, but you can attest to this, when equipment starts to get older, the technology goes away, and they advance in the technology. So what we're doing is refreshing our current tasers with the newer version. So we basically mirror Prince George County. Prince George County has changed their tasers. We're not at the top level tasers. We're at the middle level. So that for our offices to be certified in this particular less lethal device, we have to have the industry standard. What we have is old technology. This is newer technology to give the better, uh, chance of, uh, impact when it's used. So it's encouraged that we think ahead to be ahead of the curve so that we're providing the latest technology to help protect our citizens, residents, or anything that may have happened or occurred. So this is a refresh, so we're turning in the old ones and refreshing them for new. I think that's what it is.
Thank you. Um, any questions? I'll have John read it in. Do we have any questions before I have him do? So Coateson, would you read this into the record? I forgot how you do that before I asked for an explanation.
Resolution 2023-11, session regular town meeting dated May 23rd, 2023. A resolution of the town board of commissioners of the town of Upper Marlboro to authorize the purchase of tasers from a vendor.
Thank you. Um, with no comments on the board, public, if you have comments, please come up to the podium.
I think Church, uh, I think it's covered. Calacot. Good name. Um, I just had a question. What do we do with the old tasers?
They're stated, they get turned in and moved to be as a refresh. So we're turning them in to the company, and they'll give us the new one.
Is there a rebate or?
Yes, this is a discounted price.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. Thank you.
Anyone online, Clerk Coateson?
There is no one online.
All right, Commissioner Lot, any questions about the tasers before we have? Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2023-11 TASER contract? Is there a second?
Okay.
Clerk Coateson, would you call the roll?
President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Hansett. Commissioner Hansett. Commissioner Hansett.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, we have tabled the next two items, so we were on to the Upper Marlboro Economic Development Work Group nominations. Um, I have been working with, um, staff and Commissioner, um, Colbert on that, and he has a list of names for us. He was finalizing, making sure some of the people were willing to do it. So, um, can I do that to him?
Sure. Um, so in accordance with our. Five members consisting at least one town resident with one property owner. Commissioner. Or stakeholder with interest inside our. Five members I'm proposing for that board are David Herbert, who owns properties in the town, James, who owns a business in the town, um, Evelyn Stevens is a town resident, um, myself as board commissioner, and Rashida McDonald, who lives right outside of the town limit.
Are there questions, comments? Right, um, public, if you have questions or comments, if you can please come to podium, state your address. Addie, you can phone a husband for help with your name. Um, hearing no comments, is there a motion to approve the nominations presented by Commissioner Colbert for the Upper Marlboro Economic Development Worker? Is there a second? Clerk Coateson, would you call the roll? Roll?
Will do. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Hansett.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so we'll move on to administrative updates. Administrator Snyder, do we have any administrative updates?
A couple of quick ones. Now, we'll be closed on Monday for Memorial Day on our downtown event. Um, we will be publishing the trash and rep collection schedule, um, regular bond and climate out tomorrow morning. Uh, if everything's moving to Tuesday or if they're going to spend the truck around on Monday. And then also graduation.
Back to traffic. All right, so Memorial Day, the event is at 10 o'clock at the pond. If you would like to attend, we have the family of one of our fallen soldiers who will be attending, um, and we also will be coming back up to the town hall for a reception. In the town hall is a world war II memorial, so we will lay a wreath here. Um, those families are no longer with us to, um, honor their loved ones, but we will continue to do so. I don't have anything else. I think we're going to move on to public comment. Ms. Courtney, this is the time for you. Oh, you, oh, chief has an update? Sorry. That'll be your time once you, sorry.
I want to keep presenting towards, and we could talk about it more than work sessions, the possibility of having a part-time parking enforcement person, um, to do evenings. And on Saturday, um, we have been getting complaints about people parking at meters a long period of time, after hours, and paying. So just looking at, uh, if we have someone enforcing it, that person will in fact probably pay for their salary with the enforcement part of it, as well as making sure that people are paying the meters. Currently, we have a lot of meters in the evening that are not being paid, but if they see enforcement, they'll either pay the meter or they'll receive a parking citation for not paying the meters. Because the meters are from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And we're not doing the enforcement. We expect the money to put the signs up. So we need to have the enforcement from those hours. So I think having a part-time person to do evenings and on Saturday would actually help benefit, uh, town in that.
Actually, this provides me. Director Bond, did you have an administrative update or? No? Okay.
For the portion of the CIP that we, that would, that was discussed?
The CIP?
Yes, the, uh, the tractor.
Right. Do you want to kind of tell us about that? Because we're going to have to make adjustments if these two things get approved. Um, and we'll talk about them on the twelfth. Go ahead.
Yes, um, just in getting, uh, quotes, um, well, refreshed quotes for, um, for the tractor that was requested, uh, under our capital improvement, um, I discovered another option, uh, where we could actually buy slightly used equipment from United Rentals. Um, and in that, um, we may be able to purchase another piece of equipment, uh, with, um, with both units coming in less than, uh, what was requested in the CIP. Um, what we're requesting is a Bobcat S550, uh, skid steer. Um, it is a 2017. It has less than 1,000 hours of use. Every time it comes off of rent, it is, uh, um, it is maintained and it is serviced. Along with this, it will come with, uh, a bucket. It will come with forks, uh, for OSHA compliance, which is what we got deemed for the, uh, current tractor. And it will also come with a, uh, a broom with a, uh, dump bucket that will sweep everything into the bucket. Uh, the price for that unit is $52,376. The other unit is a 2016, uh, Bobcat four-wheel drive, uh, 3650 utility cart that has a small, uh, dump bed in the back, um, for getting around, uh, in, you know, tight areas around town, things of that nature. It wasn't included in this, uh, capital improvement, however, it's been in probably the last, uh, the previous three years, uh, capital improvement, um, just trying to, uh, you know, lower the budget for this year. But the grant, but the grand total for both units would be $65,276, um, for a total savings of $19,724, uh, what was, uh, requested for, uh, fiscal year '24.
So we'll talk about those two items at the next meeting, um, and address it. Just to clarify some of these comments that come in on Monday, we need to pass a budget in a certain timeline, so that is what we have done, um, and we will discuss this stuff further. So anything else before we let public comment, general public comment? All right.
I'm pretty rich, I'm in that Marlboro. I guess for my public comment, I'm going to, but trash can, it's not, um, the bus stop over here, you walk up towards like John Rogers and the bus stop like right before my street, but it's like the trash can outside that's really, like, it's plastic, it's, um, it's not permanent. It's like it was bought and then like put on the pole. Uh, it is disgusting, disgusting every time I walk past it, but I was wondering if it could be more permanent. Um, the rest of them go along with the summer and take walks quite often. Um, and then I was thinking about that abandoned building that's real next to the schoolhouse pond, um, and it's just a historic, like, if it's supposed to be historic, um, it should be restored in some way, not like deteriorate. Um, that was my opinion, and then um, I don't know if you guys talked about this, but there was, there's, I thought that Marlboro was in there, it's like a, a two-way traffic thing, um, proposing to take away parking spots, either it's going to be a one-way or a two-way. Um, I think a one-way would cause too much confusion for the town. I'm used to going, you know, to the library and make a left, not have to go around and make a, um, a right, so I would, I would prefer to have two-way. And then, um, you mentioned the meter. Uh, I thought the signs that after 6:30 PM, there's no meter.
Um, Governor Odom doing.
Oh, so it's only on the, behind the schoolhouse pond?
After 6:30.
After 6:30, it's no charge?
Uh, it's behind school.
Okay. So if that's interesting, I'm okay with it. Um, if anything, I don't know about umbrella, um, because I think it's a great feature that we have that people can just, the town, um, my family can come on weekends and do not have to have the pressure of like parking or, um, or paying to park, especially I think it's one, one that's very hard. Parking mode is better, but.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I do just want to remind, or tell everyone, because you reminded me, the, the thing that she was talking about with the design for Main Street, um, that is, I've put down your input to give to her economic development firm because they're working on that plan. They are going to be bringing up a vision plan and having another one at the community meetings. You were at the last one. I hope you'll come to the next one, and that will give us a chance to talk to them about what we want to see. I will probably bring flyers around. I don't know that I will ring everyone's doorbell this, this time, because it, it will be, um, kind of a fast turnaround. So look out for those flyers and please. Back to public comments.
I'll have to search straight. A second, what we commented about the, uh, schools. That's really me. I think that you guys are doing something background, and I know you said last time you were, so I'm hoping for you. So if I am going to have questions, they're going to give too much information to the alternative side who wants to knock it down, I'll just shut up now. But I really do honestly say that the, the building next to the main school building probably is not going to be saved. I mean, let's be realistic. So it's actually literally looking like a danger. So maybe at least a little bit of fencing is something that the county should bear in mind, because any kids that walk up there, man, they can get in there and do all sorts of harm themselves. So from just a public safety perspective, please be something about that. Even if you want me to call, I know it stayed out of calling the county, but if you're like, you want me to call the county, I'll call the county. I have no problem doing that. But I certainly want to make sure that, A, that something is done, reusing that facade of the main school building. reusing that facade of the main school building and the old stand building, which is probably recognized by Crane Highway line. I'm very, very much interested in doing something to that as well in terms of either a county or partnership or a town. That's all I have for that.
Um, I am just going to say that, that the building that you all talking about, we are working behind the scenes, we are talking with the county. It is county-owned and we are trying to get some good stuff done. And Kyle, did you ever hear back from them about the little house? Yeah, because they, they told us they were taking that down soon, so. So don't freak out when you see something there, just take it down, take down the dangerous building. All right, go ahead.
Joe, we're playing a little more mic. Um, so I found a vision plan sitting in front of my porch last week. I don't even know how it was hung in front of my porch, let me see. Um, I know I've been cleaning my porch, I've got like old signs there. Um, also wanted to comment on, um, I don't know if the town maintains the sidewalks or if the residents are responsible, but walking on the rectory side of Old Marlboro Pike, it's getting to the point where you basically have to go into the street to avoid all the weeds. And if someone's in a wheelchair, that's not safe. Um, and yes, there's lots of trash and came up Crane Highway also. I wish I had a name to pick up trash like that. Um, uh, also the, uh, town charter on the website, the, the link to the town charter goes to Maryland municipal league and it says it was 2008, and I know we've had amendments since then. So that needs to be updated. Uh, and I am pleased to announce that I am no longer president of the President's Library and am vice president. Um, but we are looking for ways to try and get people more involved. So if anyone's interested or has ideas of things we can do, you know?
Thank you.
I'm also going to answer one thing that just keeps coming up again, which is the sidewalk. If you live on a road that also has a number, your sidewalk is maintained by SHA. If you live on Old Crane Highway, it is county. If you live on any other street, am I correct? It's town? Did I get it right? Numbers, SHA, Old Crane, county, everything else, town. So everyone's got that. Anyway, are there any more comments? We'll help you with county and state. Go ahead.
Patty Calcutta, Church Street. Um, I wanted to thank Mr. Bond, public work. Um, we had a street ball, we were working to get it all cleaned up. He dropped the dumpster off on a Thursday instead of Friday so that we didn't have to do all that work in the rain to fill it up. So thank you very much, Mr. Bond. Lights on Church Street, I don't know if anybody's noticed it. Um, almost all the lights are out beyond Trinity, all the way down to Water Street. Two of them are blinking, the rest are out. I don't know what we need to do, but our parking lot is dark. We talked, somebody talked about graduation. There are so many people who come into this town for graduation. We should find a way to embrace all those folks. Put a big congratulations sign or something to show them that we are a town that supports them even though we hate their traffic.
Kyle put up, well, Kyle got one printed in, Darnell put it up. And I put signs there last weekend.
Yeah, we put them there to drag them into Marlboro.
Okay.
I was thinking it would be, it'd be nice if we could. With the business.
That's what Economic Development Firm is working on, those DECO. I'm working with the county to get them for that. Um, wait, I think you spoke already, so.
I just, I, there's one.
I know. I'm sorry. I have to follow the rules for everyone. Sorry, but we'll be here to talk to you after.
I have a thought about municipal work, enforcement. No, in 2008, when I first became a commissioner, they sent me to a meeting in Hyattsville. It was very, very instructive. Uh, as I understand now, you know, we were, didn't have a municipal code of guy running around in the car at that time, I didn't, we do now, if that's correct.
It's a lane, yeah. The lane, yeah.
Lane, okay, good. Well, you know, I live on Rectory Lane, I can see a couple of them right across the street and nothing ever. And on the weekends, we have other residents who, uh, has parties and, uh, the noise is very loud. And you call, and I don't believe we have a police force on the weekends, so it's not current, but we will. So you call Prince George's and nothing happens. The number that's in every, every goal, Thanksgiving's given up. The lady takes your message for you and so forth, and nothing happens. So noise, uh, noise, Prince George's has a code violation. All you have to do is put it in Google and you'll find out how it's supposed to be handled. Is there a town which still?
I think it's, I think it's seven to nine or nine to seven?
Nine to seven.
Nine to seven.
Nine to seven?
Nine to seven?
Ten.
The Prince George, the Prince George's on the set, on Google.
We got a, Sir Lenning, talk.
That is 24 hours. I'd be able to hear something. That's just nine to seven. In any case, um, so that's a big problem. And, and then, then this same residence has little cops. I was attorney, I'd deal with those kind of cases. Those were called criminal cases, by the way. And they were called child abuse cases. So, um, those happen, uh, they happen during the day. And they run around with these little scooters that I guess are electrified, some of them. So, um, can anything be done about that? And then when the, the resident has parties on certain times, um, it's parked all over the street and it's certainly blocking the street. It's parked on both sides, so it's like it's almost impossible to get through the street on the weekend. That's a big problem and certainly a violation, such as municipal criminal violations. So, um, can we start? I mean, if we make all these ordinances, I guess this is the thing that sort of bugs me, if you make all these ordinances over the last 50 years since, since whenever, I mean, a lot of ordinances have been made, but if you don't enforce them, you know? That's why people don't come to meetings after a while. Probably wasn't, that is why. You don't do these things and people don't think that you're really serious about these ordinances. That was a big problem.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Um, we are going to move on to preliminary approval of the next meeting agenda, which is going to address one of the things that people want to talk about. Bosch, I should have brought my glasses. Clark Kocen, would you read it for us? I cannot. Okay, I, I can't see it.
Yes, the agenda is, special town meeting agenda will be 8 o'clock. We have the photos at 6:30 of the commissioners swearing in as at 7 o'clock for Commissioner Elect Pinoir. There'll be a closed session at 7 o'clock and a meeting will start at 8. Oh, 7:30, sorry, and the meeting will start at 8 o'clock. The meeting agenda is as follows. One, call order. Two, roll call. Three, pledge of allegiance. Four, review of agenda. Five, old business. A, charter review board, board vote. B, logo and branding, board vote. C, arts council bylaws, board vote. D, meeting regulations, board discussion. Six, new business. A, Resolution 2023-13 Circuit Rider Program, board vote. B, property standards, board discussion. C, historical committee bylaws, board discussion. D, codification, board discussion. Seven, administrative update. Eight, public comment. Nine, preliminary approval of next meeting agenda and 10 adjournments.
Thank you. And we're going to need to add to that the selection of the government relations firm, which we tabled for this evening, and, um, our contract ends with them on June 30th. So if we approve June 12th, we'll be good. Um, are there any other addition? Oh, your event. Approve the event date.
So there's a.
Event committee already heat those dates if you guys.
We just have to approve them formally, so. Okay, so, hold on, let me write it down. And what we may do is it's possible that, that those two kind of budgetary things, I'll talk with staff and they may go to July, we'll see, because we got a lot. So we're swearing in a commissioner at 7 o'clock. We have to have a closed session at 7:30. We're going to start at 8 o'clock because, folks, we're having one meeting in June because we all are, have to go to a training conference. And for the, this is my job, right? But the commissioners who have full-time jobs, there's a lot to ask of them. Um, so we're doing the one meeting. And so if, if those two things can wait till July, we'll have them wait to July. So we're not here till 9:00 p.m. But we'll put the events. Sorry, I have to write it down. Okay. Nothing else to add to it? We're good?
Approval of the budget.
Oh, yeah, the budget book approval. We'll add that too. Thank you. The CIP will get added into here. Um, it will just get tagged in there, it's the one that we've been dealing with for the whole time. Um, and, okay, so then, that all said, is there a motion to adjourn?
So Commissioner Lot, is there a second?
Second.
Wait, let's try that again with just one of you.
Seven.
All right, you can call the, that was Colbert. You can call the roll, uh, Clark Kocen.
President Franklin?
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert?
Aye.
Commissioner Hansett?
Aye.
Commissioner Lot?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Meeting is adjourned. If you had questions that didn't get answered, we, I, I at least will be here to answer them. Um, just let us come around the table.
So if we start meeting the later.